Good evening and welcome to this workshop this evening. We are here to discuss, I think as said, the municipal building, we all know it's City Hall. Want to thank everyone for being here and again, the progress and what we do at City Hall is a topic and that's the only thing we'll be discussing tonight. So we just want to make that clear with everyone. We are going to have a presentation by Mr. Oaks. We heard a presentation on our last council meeting last week from ARC. Gary's got some information. Then we're going to open up two discussions for the council. Ask Gary questions, talk amongst yourselves. Once we have, the council has had their time and they feel comfortable, then we'll open up for public comment. After everyone in the public has had a chance to voice their opinion or concerns, we'll come back and have another discussion for the council. Again, no decisions will be made tonight. This is strictly for information on our municipal building. So Gary?
After receiving the drafts of ARC Architects' proposal for the city, we realized that they had missed a better option with their option number two. The north end, nearly half of City Hall was added on to house the fire department with three overhead doors accessing those bays. That portion of our building is in poor condition and has been unused for 15 years since the fire station was built. We contacted Indiana Landmarks about the possibility of replacing that end of the building with a new addition which architecturally matched the original building. They wanted to see for themselves and after viewing both the outside and the inside of that building, they agreed that would be, if we would replicate the original building, they would not be opposed to doing so. By doing so, I mean demolition of that end of the building and replacing it. Next, we contacted Miller Architects, who we were already working with on a couple of other projects, to see of their interest. After providing them with dimensions and layouts of what we had, including replacing the three bays with a complete new addition to City Hall, they provided some early sketches. We asked them to have a rendering made that showed the front of the building and that is what you have in front of you. So we knew what it was going to look like if it was replaced. Both the clerk's office and the mayor's staff have the same goal, that's to have all of us in the same building. The interior layouts you see at this stage are just conceptual and will be designed in coordination with each staff, clerk's staff and the City Hall staff. This proposal fully utilizes the footprint of what we have and does not lose the downtown parking in a new building with displaced. We have also worked with two familiar construction companies who have been working in town. The sunk cost for remodeling, the new construction, and the soft cost will be substantially less than what you've heard from ARC. Because we've gotten, what they proposed to you was from two general contractors who budgeted, were certain what those numbers would be, we've gone out and got the individual subs to give us pricing on that. So we know what our real costs are as well. The difference that we know this building and the contractor is that we know this building without having to add 500,000 or more for unknowns. We've been in it for five years. We know what this building's like and what it's going to take to remodel. This proposal is not that different from ARC. But what we need to eliminate from consideration now, this is enough for you to all consider these options, is a topic of an all-new building which abandons historic City Hall. And let me say abandoned again because that's what they did to the fire station, that's stayed empty for 15 years. And if we're to build an all-new building, this building will be abandoned. So what becomes of it? There is simply no need for another building. When we can bring the clerk's staff into the new addition and still have an additional five future offices for growth, from the layout that you see here, although conceptual, still includes the future, five more offices than we currently need from both staffs. Certainly you have questions now. And Mac participated with this, so I'm certain of one, he's got the numbers from the individual subs and stuff as we look at it.
Mac, are you the one that had the numbers? Is that right? Okay, what is the square footage on this proposal?
The current building, the original City Hall, 6,400 square feet. The addition was 6,000 square feet. You can see the 12,400 square feet.
And where's there a dollar amount given?
We combined for 6.7 million without raising property taxes. We will bring this project in for that amount or less. We think it will be substantial to plus, but right now we're telling you we can do it for the 6.7 million without a problem.
No matter what any of us did, we'll have to get our public bids, public notice in the paper, advertised, receipt bids, and review votes, and go back for the board of the work.
And who is Miller Architects?
The engineer and architectural firm, National Indiana out of Brown County, they did our water department, they're doing the current theater in town. So they've done a lot, they did the National Music Center over there, they do a lot of Internets, but they're more local than the Internets are doing back there.
And you said they did the, what have they done here in town or have done or are doing? What are they doing?
They did our water department building down there, renovating South Mulberry. They're doing the theater. They did the, what do you call it, the entertainment center over in Higginville, the big one. They just did that.
The big one that kind of sits back and has all the big acts that come in?
Yep. They're experienced firms, the principals are all on their synergies.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So Mac, just to recap, that's 6,400 square foot in this current building?
6,400.
And then 6,000 in what, in what would be the new portion?
Right.
Is that upstairs and downstairs or just 6,000? I mean...
6,000 total, 3,000 per floor. And if you notice, on each floor, there is, on the first floor, there's a very large storage files area and you have a large, again, storage files area on the second floor. And I really argue that that's not going to be needed because we are digital now and in a basket of those stacks, you can have one space in 20 years. So we're still maintaining some records that we have to maintain for a period of time. The future, you wouldn't want to be in the storage business, at least the records.
It is an appropriate time to ask Ben Merida, how many offices do you need, how much storage? Does that look like it accommodates everything?
I think it's very prelim. We're too early in the game to have those kinds of discussions. I mean, really what we're trying to get at is a path from the council. And then typically what would happen is then the departments would meet with the architect and then start defining those. So, you know, I know what my office needs, yeah, but this layout work, no. But like Gary said, it's very preliminary. So I don't know that we're ready for that as a city. That's really why the drawings that you've gotten from ARC have been very rough because they haven't got to that point yet, you know. Typically you get your guidelines, you pick what paths you're going to do. I think everybody's under the same accord, we want to save City Hall. I think that's, although that's not beneficially decided by the council, I think we are getting there. That's kind of the discussions down the road.
So the advantage is that we're saving this structure, we're not abandoning it, we're not just leaving it there without doing anything on the inside. So you agree with that, right Ben?
Really it's a council decision on whether you rehab this building or go new. I mean, that's why we've had all the workshops and everything, I mean, this is a council decision. So my preference, if that's what you're asking, would be if we can, now that the numbers have come in, within 2% of rehabbing City Hall and going new on that side, I think every, I mean, you see the audience here, I think everybody is passionate about City Hall and would like to save it if they can, so.
Thank you.
The little reason why we did this, Ben, the way we did it, we were keeping in mind what you originally said you needed. You said you needed 3,000 square feet. You said you needed 500 feet, square feet for storage. Of course, the bathrooms are given and you have one, two, three, four, five, six, six offices on the first floor. So again, you can move the walls, you know, you're right, this is just conceptual. We're trying to show you that on one floor, we can give you everything you ask for. The second floor is really for the future. There's four or five offices up there that are unassigned. You've got a conference room up there, that's the council, the meeting right in front of you, so that's up there. So we've tried to take everybody's concerns and considerations in mind and you're right, this is just conceptual, we're just trying to show you the dimensions, the 3,000 square feet we're trying to give you, what you said you needed.
This does not include the utility office?
No.
Okay, so this does not include the utility office? The ARC blueprints that we got, that did include the utility office? Okay, gotcha.
Well, it was optional. There was a statement that said it can't.
Yeah, square footage was included in there and that's where we're, I kind of feel like we're comparing apples to oranges. I mean, ARC's has been, the request was adding square footage, you know, no more than, because we wanted the risk to come in lower, add contingencies, things like that, so.
And I think we understood from an ARC perspective, the demolition of the building is a more serious project. You've got to go to Indiana Historic Landmarks and we brought them in. They were down here again today to confirm what we want to do. So I think I understood why they didn't make that part of their original proposal, although it certainly could have been an option. We've done, I've done three historic buildings here in town, won awards for it. We know how to do them, that's not the challenge in this. The challenge in this tonight is to get the new building off the table and work between the city staff and the clerk's staff of what the new building's going to look like on the inside.
I don't know if this is the place, but what historic buildings have you done here in the city, Gary?
What are the?
What historic buildings have you done?
The Kivit on the corner over here on the square, the county jail over here, and the, what used to be called the Kennedy Home, that's now the retreated mineral springs up on Harrison Street, and that was an award winner from the States.
Do you have a breakdown of what the refurb, refurb being the old part and how much the new part is? I mean, not, not just a rough.
They're rough, but we feel very comfortable where we're at number wise, and this is before it's even bid. The remodeling will be no more than $2 million. No more. And that includes everything you see here on the side. We're not moving walls. We're not going to move walls. We don't need to, to make it, to shine this nickel up. The rest of it, the building, the new building, I will tell you, we've had estimates as low as 3.1 million. I think it'll be in that range.
And just a clarification, if you look on the drawings, you know, we keep saying 6,000 square feet, it's actually 6,436 square feet, sorry, just a little over.
So you're saying 2 million for rehabbing this side?
Yep.
The downstairs and...
Everything, everything. I think we'll be returning money to you, but I'm telling you, 2 million.
So what are the plans for like, up here at the kitchen area?
There are main offices, just like it is.
And then this one is not planning on bringing the water office over here?
Not at this time. The biggest problem you have, Phil, is that building, I'm going to be real honest, it's 200, it's worth about a quarter of a million dollars. Every week I get a list of disconnects, people that are struggling to pay their utility bills. I don't think it's a very good look for the city to be tearing down a perfectly good building that's worth a quarter of a million dollars and so we can move them into new digs. That building is perfectly functional for them, it's just recently been remodeled. If you've been in it recently, it's very, very nice, meets all their needs, it's on the alley. The only thing that doesn't work in that building right now is a little tray and we just haven't gotten the right person in to, it was originally, I think, a bank teller's window or something and it just needs to be worked on a little bit. Other than that, the building is in great shape. I don't think it's a good look for the city to be tearing down, throwing a quarter of a million dollars out the window.
Think it'll be repurposed for another need or anything?
Why would we need to repurpose it?
I'm just asking, because our original building tried to get everyone out of City Hall.
Right.
You know?
Yeah. Well, the utility, I don't know, how long has the utility been separate over there? It's been separate for a long, long time. It's just the clerk's office that had left in recent memory and that's what we're trying to get back in. What used to be together, the utility's kind of a separate entity on its own and I don't think they need us holding their hand.
And how far over on the bay area are we talking about taking off?
All of it.
Here we basically follow the footprint that's there right now.
And the only reason why I ask is that I had a former retired fireman that was giving calls and he wanted me to look at it because he says the two bays are a part of the original City Hall.
That true.
Says the three bays today.
They added the third bay on separate, like in 1928 or 1930 when they got the bucket load truck and also added the day room. But he says that the first two bays and the upstairs is part of the original.
If you look at the construction of the east wall, what would be my wall on the east? It's that thick, it's like three, that was the outer wall. There would have been no way you would have built a wall like that if, you know, it weren't an outside wall. I've also talked to some old timers and they're, I've been told that it wasn't part, that the, the first two bays were added in the 20s, like '23 or '24. And then the third bay was added when they bought a longer fire truck and it couldn't fit in to either the first or the second bay and that was added like the early 30s, mid 30s.
You can best see from the backside of the building, the different roof lines that are back there between those two bays and then the shed roof for what was the building department's offices that was added on. So, yeah, from the backside of the building, the east side, you can best see the construction as it's progressed over the years.
I just, it was brought to my attention this evening before, does he could make it? He sent me an article from John Satchin's book and that's why I was trying to see if we had confirmation.
We don't, we don't have plans on this building. We have torn everything apart. We cannot find anything. I'm sure at one time, there were plans, but we can't tell you the original.
We had, and ARC had, we have a 3D visualization of the building. So it's very unique, I don't know if I have one with me or not, but anyway, it's a 3D version of it. And you walk through the building and you can see as if you were sitting up on the balcony up there, how this part of the building is constructed, including the rooms that was the Beckys with the clerk's office and my office is over here. You see how everything is closed together, so it's, I know they had it and I know we had it for our contractors to look at so they could visualize what these buildings are.
I just know that it was one of the buildings that, that's the thing about this City Hall, City Hall engine, we're not taking out part that was the original, but it's part of the original, I'm sure.
I guess I, two things. One, Phil, back to what you were talking about, if that was the original part, we don't have to, but I don't think the National, or Indiana, or whoever, they already said take off the heat, be having a question whether or not that was part of the original. And my second thought for discussion would be, you know, when you bring up the utility office, if we do the ARC plan one for the new building, what do we do with City Hall? If we abandon this, as Gary put it, what can we bring back into this building that's going to be able to sustain? I know the museum has a couple over here, but I don't see that they have enough funds to keep it going.
Speaking of funds, was Jeff Peters supposed to be here to...
I spoke to Jeff, he was, he was not able to make it tonight. And again, like Ben said, a lot of this is preliminary, we got to figure out which way we're going. But we have firm numbers on what we're going to do to the state. Jeff said, you know, the 6.7 that we've been talking about is still feels strong leading bond for that amount, not raising property taxes, we'd be able to pay back that debt easily.
And just to piggyback off of there, just so everybody's crystal clear on that, when we're talking 6.7 million bond, it doesn't mean 6.7 million towards the building. I think it's, you know...
Soft costs, architectural fees.
So you have 6.1, that can go towards the building if you go that route, so. I just don't want there to be confusion down the road.
So that is where we're comfortably set for that without raising taxes?
I wonder if we have cash still available?
We still do have 7 million dollars in cash, so it's like 4 billion fund, so that is also available.
But I would be wary on that, so we're not sure where we're coming to the state because, even though that's, doesn't make the building, the city, you know, we take back into our general fund for operating costs, which we may need from the state. So any other questions from the council? Either reservation, and what do you feel, strong with that one? You don't feel strong so much about the other one? I mean, that's why we have the workshop, so we can openly discuss what we want to talk about.
I feel strongly that we try to keep City Hall, if at all possible, remodeling it or I guess fixing the interior of it sounds appealing and having everything the same building sounds appealing because just letting it sit here, it'll just become a ghost town and not appealing visually, aesthetically for our community. And, you know, we want it to be a thriving building where, you know, people feel proud of and feel like it's part of our heritage and not part of our tradition.
I think too, for the record, in the camp of remodeling City Hall, yeah, this is, this is part of our history, like Suzie said, and I would hate to see something this historic not be present for their citizens of the past and the future. We already have enough historic buildings here in town that was brought to my attention by Mr. Rick Darmel that are for sale, so, you know, we need to preserve what we have.
Any other comments from the council at this point? If not, then we'll come back after we've heard from public comments. So anyone from the public would like to comment on this issue this evening, just come to the microphone, state your name and address and you'll have two minutes, give or take. Mac's not up here.
My name is Ben Rollins, 1095 Plantation Court, Martinsville. Just as a local citizen and a connoisseur of local architecture, I guess, I like the direction that the council is talking tonight, of saving this building. I think it is a historic part of the city and it's something that can't be recreated. You just can't recreate history. You can create Disneyland where it may look kind of like it, but this is true, this is the real fabric of Martinsville. So I would hope that the council will think highly of keeping this building as part of the renovation and addition. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Sydney Stalsworth, 39 East Washington Street. We have a business over here on the square. So I came down to hear what was going to happen and what was going on. I liked the idea of keeping it, but I also was kind of like, so are we going to have construction over there and construction over here happening at the same time? So it sounds like you're far from construction at this point with this building, correct? And it's not going to collide with what's going on over there around the square?
Their projection on their project finished courthouse is two years.
Mm-hmm.
I was with them before that.
You hope this is done before that?
It is done before that, exactly.
Well, we sat in the other night on the meeting and there was three different options. So one of them was short and middle and long. So as a business owner, it makes me concerned, like, you know, all of the different projects going on in a short, little area.
Just real quick, the meeting you ran was talking about the parking and how long they were going to have the streets changed on the parking area. The short time period is about four months, where they have Morgan Street one way to the west. I believe Main Street is one way south. Washington Street is one way east. Jefferson is completely shut down.
Right, I have that paperwork.
If, if they vote not to do it that way, that's why the county has to do that. It's going to kind of where the lawyer works. If that's not the way it goes, then it could be up to two years on the parking also, the way it's going to go around. But the actual construction on the courthouse is slated for two years.
Okay, so you think that this one will collide with that one? Then at some point during two years?
I'm going to say it will collide because we have kind of space back here for our construction crews to be back in here. The county is kind of worried about where they're going to go. And all their manpower is going to have to work on that.
Okay.
You know, we're hoping to be done before they arrive.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Rod Stafford. And we was here at an earlier meeting. And I really would like to see the architectural, the old building stay as much as would be possible. And one of the things that I really caught tonight that I hadn't caught before is if we're going to spend $2 million of this money rehabbing the original building here, then that really makes that budget much cheaper altogether because we would have to still maintain this building even if we vacated it. And we would have to spend a lot of money on windows and exterior to keep it up and maintain its historical value, even if it's out here empty. So if we take that $2 million and apply it to the original City Hall, and then the rest of it is approximately the $4 million, then basically we're getting what we're doing here brand new for the $4 million bucks. And I want the city people to get exactly what they need. And I want to be sensitive to that fact. But I also want to think about myself as a taxpayer of, you know, how much money am I going to spend? Right now, there's a lot of dissent, as everybody knows, from the state level on down about taxation, you know? So I think we have to be cognizant of that. We have to be careful of that fact. So at any rate, that's my short opinion of everything here. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Any more discussions on the council? Any other questions? So where do we go from here? And we've had two courtrooms discuss several different options. Do you want some time to think about this? And we put it back on the agenda for second meeting in May?
To take a final vote on which way we want to go? Do you need more time, more time than that to think about this? What's, what's your direction? What do you want us to do?
I don't need any more time. I personally would like to go ahead and go down on this, like, our next round of meetings.
Well.
How many takes of time to take a look and digest both things? Because if you're not, you decide that if you're not wanting to water the building, you always might want to have. And that's, that's a cost to come out. Because the other, the architect, we gave them the directions to move that one. And we have to see what it is that the cost also. I think probably want to take account of a little time to move it.
Well, if.
Which way, I mean, I know you're not wanting a new building. So that's, that's all we need is which route you want to go with City Hall there.
Well, we wouldn't be able to have at the next meeting because that's next Monday. And I think that's too soon. But we, we could put, again, I can have Mr. Porter put it on the agenda for the first meeting in May. And if it's, you're not comfortable to discuss at that time, we can take it off the agenda and put it for the next meeting.
Well, can, I mean, I mean, I don't think we publicly agreed to remodel versus building new. And shouldn't that be voted on first? And like taking the care of it and taking, you know, that box checked off and.
We could do that. We can do it however you want.
I hate to go back to it, but I've got one question. On the ARC option two, which is the addition to City Hall. It says sixteen thousand square foot of renovation and new addition. I thought ARC was not doing anything to City Hall. Renovation, that means what? Does it paint there?
At the last council meeting that you're referring to?
Yeah, I thought that ARC wasn't doing anything to this current City Hall. They were just proposing to add on.
Yeah, the last workshop, it requested that they come back with two options that were asked, was apples. One being a complete cut of the, this half of City Hall with the addition, adding square footage to match that with the new building proposal. So that's, so that, that is, it's a complete renovation.
And that option?
Number two does include renovations of City Hall.
And that, though, I would like to go down on at the next meeting at least, is renovation versus building new. Like I said, get that part out of the way in just that moment.
So what are you proposing we vote on at the next meeting? And what are the two options that you're saying?
I think she's only giving one option. She's just saying she wants to not build a new building. She just wanted to rehab, remodel City Hall.
Right, so take the vote on.
Make a motion, okay.
Make, you know, take vote on remodel versus building new. That, but next meeting.
Okay.
That way we're not, you know what I mean? Just to get that portion, take, you know, put to rights.
Did make a decision at a future meeting.
Correct.
Of which?
Correct.
Architect, which?
Right.
Which route?
Right. Right. Because we've not done that yet. We've not made the decision yet on that. So I think that publicly needs to be done.
And I think that's why we're having this to, you're more of a public. That's why we're having this tonight.
Excuse me.
Give us, right, that opportunity to back to us to discuss.
Is there anybody who wants to come forward versus renovating versus building new? If anybody want to come and voice their opinion?
My name is Mike Kirsch. I've probably been to more meetings as building than most of the people on the council. So I know this building pretty well. The one thing that you're going to get with renovations of this building and an addition is a lot of flexibility. And you're going to be saving basically the money that you would have if the building was empty. You're going to have to deal with this building regardless if we build a new one or not. The one thing that you can't really put a good dollar amount on this is being locked into a new building of the one. So that property is going to be something that the city will have in their pocket for the future. And that's something that down the road, you may need that piece of property for something other than a, the joint of one hundred, so.
This building is really built pretty structurally sound. And it's worth the investment to put into it. The only parts of the building that are having problems are the parts that are going to be taken off during the remodel. So by the time you get everything put together, you're going to have a building that's going to last to your needs for another fifty years. So I really think that the investment into this building is justified versus the new building. And that's my opinion. Thank you.
I'm Ann Langford, and I own one of the buildings on the square. I also own Berry's and Ivy. And we have people come in. And they used to always want to talk about Johnny Wooden. And they wanted to go on his trail. And so if you tear down all our old buildings, then it's, it's not going to be a reason for people to come to town. They want to come to town. There's a lot of history buffs out there. And IU draws a lot of people during games. We get people from Ohio State. We get them from all over. And they come to our store and they ask about things in Martinsville, what they can see, you know, what they can do. So Cedar Creek brings in a lot of people also. And even though it's, you know, it's, it's what it is. But if you go to tearing down our buildings, then we're not going to have that history that is there now. And I would like to see this courtroom stay the way it is. I'd hate to see it, you know, something done to it. So if you could do the new building without hurting the old building, that would be good. That's it.
Ann, so what are you saying? You're saying?
Pardon?
Keep the, keep the old building remodeled?
Yeah.
Versus, you said something about.
Well, no, keep the old building, don't remodel it. But build, build the new structure.
Oh, okay, okay.
About that?
Yeah, yeah.
Good evening again, Rick Darnall, three thirty-nine South Ohio Street. I think you all know I, I fall on the preservation side of this. I've not really addressed the new building option. But I think being the most expensive is definitely a negative on it. It disregards the need for downtown parking. I mean, when I look out there, I see, I see a flat vacant lot that could be a solution to some of the problems. If we build there and one of, I'm going to call them token repurposing suggestions for this building, all you're doing is adding more necessary parking that we don't have. The, the token repurposing options, Ann alluded to it earlier. You put it on the, on the market. What is the market for this type of building? We could take a stroll around the square. And there are multiple commercial spots that are available for sale, rent, lease, right now. I know one of their options that ARC presented was to rent it. Again, I don't know what solution that is because the city would still be responsible for the upkeep and also would lose its tax exempt status on the portion that's rented. So, and I know it was mentioned donating it. But I would, I don't think anybody in this room has spoken with more upset taxpayers in the last two weeks than, than I have. I say that pretty confidently. But how does it look to give away an asset that the taxpayers have funded for a hundred and eight years to simply build a newer version of the same thing? And as some folks have said, I mean, I'm a history buff. But if we, if we build everything new, what separates us from other communities? Anybody can build new. We have an opportunity to honor our past, refurbish this building, continue to use it for its original purpose, add on to it. I'm not a, I'm not a hardline preservationist. If we need to make some adjustments to it, make it work for us today. But that is honoring the past and building for our future. And if we do it responsibly, I don't, I don't care if it's $10 cheaper. Right now, there is no, I don't think there's ever been more demand to see fiscal responsibility out of all levels of our government. So that's where I stand. And I thank you all for your, for your consideration on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Ray, I will say the, your back parking lot, you see the empty space, bought one for over thirty years when we started talking about this and the remodeling. As I've said before, our original was to go out this way, this way. And that's why we purchased the homes back there, the parking lot, because we wanted to extend City Hall along this way and get the water office as well. So everybody's having one building and create your parking out this way. But that's the reason why those are vacant is because those homes were purchased with that foresight to add on here.
Yes.
And unfortunately, things have gone down the road. Things have been keep down the road. And now we're looking at going this way, which doesn't matter to me which way we go. We just needed to do this project for some time. It should have been done a long time ago before the fire station, police station and things, but.
Yeah, and, and you're right. That, that was, that has not been vacant very long. Actually, I think it was demoed in 2022. The office. Yeah, so, but no, it just seems to be a, a possible solution rather than causing more.
That's why we did it so we have plenty of parking for City Hall.
Yeah.
Provide that so that we have that.
Yeah.
But then again, at that time, we housed everybody here, the police station, the fire station and everything, so.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Counsel?
I'm having a heck of a time hearing you folks. So maybe I've missed some things. But anyway, I'll be short. I spent my whole life in commercial construction. And granted, I was mostly Bob the Builder. But fifty years, you'll learn a few other things too. If you can get an architect, drink a few beers, you'll learn more. The life of a commercial building in this country today is 25 years. They won't tell you that if they're trying to sell you that. This building, how old is this building? Anybody?
Hundred and eighty years.
Huh?
Hundred and eighty.
It was designed to be a hundred year building. And from what I can see, even longer. We don't have the kinds of things on this building that will wear out like I see on a lot of brand new buildings. I just thought I'd point it out. Thank you.
Anyone else? This is your opportunity.
So what I began in direction of the council is I will ask Mr. Porter to put it on the agenda for next Monday night's meeting, take a vote on whether we're going to refurbish City Hall and add on or build a new structure. So, from what I understand. All right, well, thank you to everyone who came out tonight to help with.